Good morning, everyone. Want to get started very shortly. Thank you. Okay, we'll get rocking. Yes, sir. Okay, we have a quorum, so we're going to get started. So to begin our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Carrie Olson of the East Falls Presbyterian Church. She is here today as the guest of Councilman Jones. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors, please rise.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark, Council President Clark, and I am grateful to Councilmember Jones for the invitation to be here with you. I bring you greetings from the wonderful people of East Falls Presbyterian Church. Grace and peace to you. I invite you to join your hearts with mine in a spirit of prayer. Holy One, we give you thanks for this day, which presents us with another opportunity to serve the people of this city of Philadelphia. We come before you this morning representing a variety of faiths, neighborhoods, districts, interests, and perspectives, but united as people dedicated to making our city a better place for all who live, learn, work, worship, and play here. At times, oh God, we are overwhelmed by the issues facing our city. Issues of gun violence and poverty, hunger, housing insecurity, addiction, education, and the list goes on. We pray for your peace to come and be made manifest in our city. Your peace that is shalom, wholeness, holistic well-being for the whole community. Your peace that is, as Dr. King said, not the absence of conflict, but the presence of justice. Bring your peace and healing and wholeness and make a way where there seems to be no way. Grant wisdom and courage to the members of this city council. Equip them with all they need to do their work and to do it in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice. Help them to use their authority to serve faithfully and to benefit the good of all Philadelphians. We pray by name for Council President Darrell Clark, for councilmembers Mark Squilla, Kenyatta Johnson, Jamie Gaudier, Curtis Jones, Michael Driscoll, Ketsi Lozada, Cindy Bass, Anthony Phillips, Brian O'Neil, Kendra Brooks, Sharon Vaughn, Jim Harity, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, and Isaiah Thomas. We give you thanks that they have accepted the call to love and serve the people of this city. And so, as they do the business set before them this day, guide them to be leaders who consider the least of these among us, that their decisions would demonstrate care for those who are most vulnerable in our midst, that we might truly be the city of brotherly and sisterly and sibling love. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you so much, Reverend, for your spiritual guidance this morning. We really appreciate it. Council will be at ease. Thank you, and Reverend, thank you again. We really appreciate you being here today. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 8th, 2023, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 8th, 2023 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of members of council, there is a request for leave of absence by Member Thomas.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and leave shall be granted for Councilman Thomas. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to the session today. Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for the session to council and is required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first readings, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Sir.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilman Squilla may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the session. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and the motion passes. And our next order of business is communication, and I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor or any other communication that he may have in his possession today.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, and today transmitting to the council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 230302, 230402, 230407, 230410, 230412, 230413, 230414, 230437, 230438, 230440, 230442, 230443, 230444, 230446, 230447, 230448, and 230455. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 3rd Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 372, 702 Cantrell Street, 613, 625, and 723 Mercy Street, 737 Tree Street, 535, 537, and 602 Winton Street located in the 1st Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 2903 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, 2907 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, 2925 Cecil B. Moore Avenue, and 1631 North Bailey Street in the 5th Councilmanic District, and a resolution approving the lease amendment, assignment, and assumption agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Center City redevelopment area identified as a portion of 2025 through 29 Chestnut Street, including floors 4 through 7 and a portion of the 1st floor, and a resolution approving the reappointment of Sonny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board, and an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise for the purpose of making, enlarging, connecting, extending, operating, and maintaining public parks for recreational use, certain parcels of land generally bounded and located between Vine Street, Fairmount Avenue, 8th Street, and 12th Street, together with all improvements thereon and all associated easements and appurtenances, and to lease the property or a portion thereof to the Center City District, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Decker, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you so much, Council President. On behalf of my colleague, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, I extend a warm welcome and greetings and welcome to his champion of the week, Big Picture Alliance. They are Executive Director Alex Marte and Youth Representative Keisha Datz. May you stand? Great. Big Picture Alliance empowers youth filmmakers and creatives by giving them the tools and skills to bring their ideas and experiences to life through peer-to-peer mentorship, after-school, and summer programming. Big Picture Alliance has been helping young Philadelphians break into the film industry for over 30 years. Big Picture Alliance provides quality out-of-school-time programming, which we know is exceedingly important to Councilmember Thomas, and it helps to keep kids occupied out of school in a productive way. They have an upcoming film festival Thursday, June 22nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the One Art Community Center in West Philadelphia. Welcome to Philadelphia City Council.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And our next order of business is introduction of bills and resolutions, and I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the bills and resolutions that are being offered by our members today.
Councilman Phillips offers an ordinance amending Chapter 10600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Public Spaces Prohibited Conduct by prohibiting certain facial coverings from being worn in certain spaces all under certain terms and conditions. Mr. President, Councilman Phillips would like to be recognized.
Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
Good morning, colleagues and members of the viewing public. On several occasions, neighbors have asked me, "Councilmen, when will you ban those masks?" I know some of my council colleagues who are here today have gotten similar questions. Well, today marks the beginning of the process to address this issue because this morning I'm introducing a ski mask ban. Amongst several states, Virginia, West Virginia, Florida, South Carolina, and Georgia all have facial covering bans. Before the pandemic, New York City and DC also had facial covering ban. With my bill, Philadelphia will be next. Before the pandemic, it was well understood that when you see someone wearing a ski mask, they're about to commit a crime. That's why folks wear them, to remain anonymous while committing crimes. Now, if we look at recent police footage of shootings and robberies in the city, many of these people are wearing ski masks. And because of an impressive rapper named Kuzhicek, who started this trend, you cannot distinguish a misguided kid from a common criminal. That is a problem. It is a problem that we cannot ignore. We cannot ignore it because neighbors feel unsafe. We cannot ignore it because police struggle to identify suspects in these masks, and we cannot ignore it because this is both a public safety issue and a quality of life issue. Our quality of life suffers when folks feel intimidated while going about their daily life in this city. The discourse on this subject has been focused on whether it will stop shootings. I'm not going to sit here and pretend that it will, but what it will do is make it easier for the police to identify suspects and make our neighbors feel safer. We cannot remain silent on this issue when our neighbors, our seniors, mothers, aunts, grandparents, and children feel intimidated in their own neighborhoods. It is time that we listen to their concerns and ban these masks. Before the pandemic, no one would have defended wearing ski masks in 90-degree heat. There's simply no reasonable justification for what we're seeing play out in this city. So, parents, stop letting your children wear them. Stop buying them for your children. And young people, stop wearing them. And I'll take the opportunity to encourage business owners to stop allowing people to wear ski masks in their stores as well. You cannot serve in these communities and be scared of the people you're serving. With that said, I would like to thank my co-sponsors, Councilmember Jim Harity, who's been there every step of the way in support of this. Thank you, Jim. And Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Bass, Councilmember Lozada, Councilmember Squilla, Councilmember O'Neil, Councilmember Driscoll, and Councilmember Vaughn, thank you for co-sponsoring this very important legislation. Thank you, Council President. God bless.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Councilmen. Refer to committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution calling on PICO, Philadelphia Gas Works, and the Philadelphia Water Department to make information about residential energy use and energy costs easily accessible for property owners in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on PICO, Philadelphia Gas Works, and the Philadelphia Water Department to develop comprehensive plans to reduce energy costs to consumers and to improve energy efficiency.
Next week's calendar.
And on behalf of Councilmember Thomas, a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the champions of the week, the youth leaders and young filmmakers of the Big Picture Alliance, who will be premiering their original short films at this year's Big Picture Film Festival this month.
This week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge some guests who are joining me today for council business. I want to take a moment and ask them to stand. And we have with us today former world champion Philadelphia Phillies, Dicky Ray Knowles. Could you please stand? The 1980 World Championship Team. You know, we got that championship in 1980, so we want to thank Mr. Dicky Knowles for being here with us today, and he's joined also by Philadelphia Phillies executives, Rob Holliday, who's the Director of Amateur Scouting Administration, as well as my good friend, give a round of applause. As well as, he was also joined by my good friend, Philadelphia Phillies Executive Vice President for Marketing, Mr. Mike Harris. Thank you for being here as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Mr. Knowles, you didn't bring that ring. I understand. I understand. We wanted to see a little bling bling. We don't get those too often. I got you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmen. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. We really appreciate it. Mr. Decker, please.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and 10 resolutions. Entitled an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk cafe in the vicinity of 4001 Crescent Street.
Refer to committee.
And on behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank, deeds conveying title to 3107 Cecil B. Moore Avenue and 21401 North 32nd Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple title to 2903 Cecil B. Moore Avenue.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the lease amendment, assignment, and assumption agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Center City redevelopment area identified as a portion of 2025 through 2029 Chestnut Street.
Next calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1217 Pennix Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 815 West 1st Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1625 through 41 North 10th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution rescinding the authorization granted to the Philadelphia Land Bank by Resolution Number 220749, adopted by City Council on September 29, 2022, to dispose of 1426 through 32 North 27th Street located in the 5th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to conduct hearings regarding the use of unmanned aircraft systems, also known as drones, as an additional law enforcement tool that would enhance public safety in the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And on his own behalf, Councilman Jones offers a non-privileged resolution also naming the 5600 block of West George Avenue as Reverend James S. Allen Way.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the city of Philadelphia to modernize intermodal high-level communications to reestablish in effort to ensure Philadelphia can actively efficiently respond to a crisis.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was never more clear, never more evident, that when the I-95 situation occurred, that there was a need for rapid communications, that I had to reach out to my colleagues that were directly affected by its collapse. But more importantly, on a regular basis, whether it's natural disasters such as flooding and rain, whether it's water disasters when we find out that a major section of Philadelphia had contamination in their water, that the commissioners should be able to reach out and contact elected officials. Elected officials should conversely be able to reach commissioners to get accurate information to be disseminated to the public. When that doesn't happen, misinformation happens, bad advice happens, and it's chaotic. Back in the day, and I use that term, we had a communications process that a lady would connect you almost like a phone operator, that if you didn't want to give out your phone number to a commissioner, or the commissioner wanted to give out their phone number to you, they would make that connection, they would make that call, so that in cases of emergency or dire need, people could connect to people. I think it's time that we revisit that. I think I named it in the resolution, the name of the lady. What's her name? Switchboard? Yeah, well, you would call the switchboard, and then you get special. You remember this, special communications with folk. It's time to reinstitute that. But intermodal, an email chain, a text stream, a phone call, a member to commissioner, commissioner to member, has to be a part of our rapid response communications. And I look forward to working in this administration, but we'll look forward to instituting it in the next, so that we can stay connected. Member Phillips, represented, not Member Phillips, but Member Driscoll, was pushed into a situation where he needed every hand on deck. He was out there for, it seemed like, days, but his ability to mobilize all of us is an important factor in responding to man-made or natural crises. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Next week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, a non-privileged resolution approving the reappointment of Sonny Popowski to the Philadelphia Water Sewer and Stormwater Rate Board. And on his own behalf, Councilman Johnson offers a non-privileged resolution urging the members of the National Baseball Hall of Fame's Golden Era Committee to nominate and elect former Philadelphia Phillies great Dick Allen to the National Baseball Hall of Fame as part of the class of 2027. Mr. President, Councilman Johnson would like to be recognized for a motion on this resolution.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Before I be acknowledged for the motionless resolution, I just have a few remarks. And today I introduce a city council resolution urging the members of the National Baseball Hall of Fame Golden Days Era Committee to nominate and elect former Philadelphia Phillies great Dick Allen to the National Baseball Hall of Fame as part of the class of 2027. In December of 2021, Mr. Allen fell one vote short of getting into the Hall of Fame for the second time in a row. Allen supporters will now have to wait until the Golden Days Era Committee votes in December of 2026 to see if Mr. Allen will finally make it into the Hall of Fame. After speaking with the Phillies and Mr. Allen's family, I have introduced this resolution to show that city council and the city of Philadelphia support having him in the Baseball Hall of Fame. Mr. Allen is not just one of the greatest players in Philly's history, but is considered the Phillies' first African-American superstar. His statistics alone show that he is long overdue to be inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame. A seven-time Major League Baseball All-Star, Dick Allen spent nine of his 15 Major League seasons from 1963 to 77 with the Philadelphia Phillies and won National League Rookie of the Year in 1964. During this time with the club, Allen batted 290 with 204 doubles, 204 home runs, 655 runs batted in, and played in 1,070 games. His slugging percentage is second best in Philly's history behind only Hall of Famer Chuck Klein, and he ranks 10th in the team history in home runs. Mr. Allen, whose number 15 was retired by the Philadelphia Phillies Club in September of 2020, became one of the all-time greats in Philly's history after being signed by the team in 1960 to his first professional contract. He joined the Phillies' front office in 1994 as a fan development representative and later a club ambassador. Mr. Allen passed away on December 7th of 2020 at the age of 78. Mr. Allen is only the ninth member of the franchise in its 140-plus-year history to have his jersey retired. The other Phillies alumni to be so honored also have plaques hanging in the Hall of Fame. In Cooperstown, New York, is Richie Ashburn, Jim Bunning, Mike Spitt, Steve Carlton, Roy Holliday, Robin Roberts, Allen, as well as Glover, Cleveland Alexander, and Chuck Klein. The legacy of Mr. Allen will continue for generations to come, thanks to the newly-named Dick Allen Field at the Philadelphia Phillies Major League Baseball Urban Youth Academy that was dedicated last week at FDR Park in South Philadelphia, which is in the 2nd Councilmanic District. The Dick Allen Field is another great reminder for our next generation of players of what he endured as an African-American player while still achieving great success. Dick Allen's legacy will never be forgotten, and again, I want to thank former world champion Phillies player Dicky Ray Knowles for coming to city council today to testify in support of this resolution. Mr. Knowles was a Major League pitcher with several teams during his career and played for the Phillies from 1979 to 1981 and again in 1990. Dicky was also a member of the 1980 World Series Championship Team pitching in relief. Knowles was a player in the minor leagues when he first was introduced to Allen. The two later became great friends. I urge my colleagues here to approve the passage of this resolution. Once this resolution is approved, one copy will be given to the Philadelphia Phillies so they can send it directly to the National Baseball League Hall of Fame's Golden Days Era Committee, and a second copy will be given to Mr. Allen's family to show them that the city of Philadelphia and city council supports their efforts to get their loved one inducted into National Baseball Hall of Fame. And with that being said, Council President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of this resolution at today's session of council.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Johnson offers a non-privileged resolution calling on the United States Congress to pass the Resources for Victims of Gun Violence Act. to pass the Resources for Victims of Gun Violence Act, sponsored by Senator Bob Casey and Congressman Dwight Evans, and to ensure that victims and co-victims of gun violence have access to the resources and support necessary to recover from the impacts of gun violence.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Lozada offers a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying Title Two, seventeen oh two, North Third Street, and twenty-three oh three, North Lawrence Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Gaultier offers three resolutions. A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct a hearing on the city of Philadelphia's capacity to prepare individuals of all educational backgrounds for careers in the growing life sciences industry with a focus on the cell and gene therapy subsector.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution renaming the three-hundred block of North Holly Street Winnie Harris Way.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of the Philadelphia Reparations Task Force to study and develop reparations proposals for Black Philadelphian descendants of enslaved Africans in the United States.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Council President. It is crystal clear that many of the crises plaguing our city have their roots in American slavery. And while I am proud that Philadelphia is a beacon of progressive ideals and diversity, we know that Black Philadelphians who descended from enslaved Africans endure racism that's baked into the foundation of our city and society. Therefore, the city has a duty to join with state and federal government and remove and rectify extraordinary racial disparities. Because not only did the government never atone for its original sin of American slavery, but for generations after the Civil War, General Order Number Three, and the Fourteenth Amendment, lawmakers enacted and encouraged policies that subjugated Black residents to second-class citizenship. Redlining prevented Black families from earning generational wealth. Predatory companies and individuals tricked Black residents into, quote, "buying homes on contract," turning Black families who just wanted a home of their own into cash cows. Employers paid Black employees less than their white counterparts, continuing the centuries-long tradition of exploiting Black bodies for labor. And segregated public schools forced children of color to learn in crumbling and overcrowded environments, preventing generations of already disadvantaged young people from obtaining the high-quality education they needed to escape crippling poverty. So when this body discusses implementing bold solutions that get at the root of problems like poverty and gentrification, reparations must be a part of that conversation. Because reparations are not a handout, they are what the descendants of enslaved Africans are owed and need. And nowhere is this more apparent than the gun violence epidemic that disproportionately impacts our working-class Black residents. You can trace a direct line from the decades of racially motivated disinvestment in Black neighborhoods to gun violence. We all know that it is no accident that formerly redlined areas full of blighted properties, crumbling schools, and uncollected dumping experience the most violent crime. And until these communities receive the investments required to rectify these problems, gun violence will continue to haunt this city. And so I am proud that today, on the eve of Juneteenth, we are taking a step towards loosening slavery's lingering chokehold on the descendants of enslaved Africans by establishing the Philadelphia Reparations Task Force. The Philadelphia Reparations Task Force will complete a comprehensive, data-driven study to determine if and how our city was complicit in slavery. And while there is no way to truly eradicate past wrongs, the task force will recommend concrete steps, financial and otherwise, we can take to eradicate extraordinary racial disparities. Until we look into our past with the determination to uncover the entire truth, no matter how ugly or scary that truth may be, our original sin will continue to toxify the present and the future. Thank you to the neighbors who have been pushing the city to take this necessary step, especially Brianna, Rashawn, and the entire Philadelphia Incobra chapter. It is because of your activism that we are here today. And I know that Rashawn and Brianna are here. I'd like them to stand up and be recognized. And thank you to Councilmember Brooks, as well as the cosponsors of this resolution for your partnership. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. I'm proud to co-introduce this resolution with my colleague, Councilmember Gaultier. Every day, we can see the ongoing impact of slavery and racist policies on the people of Philadelphia. And despite the heroic efforts of Black leaders and the astounding resilience of Black communities, Black children still get far fewer resources and opportunities than white children, and Black families still suffer from poverty, violence, and other dangerous conditions at a far higher rate than white families. And as a restorative justice practitioner, I believe that we cannot escape this cycle of poverty and violence without addressing their original cause of harm. And we owe it to the people of Philadelphia, the largest portion whom are Black, to examine reparations as a way to make up for hundreds of years of exploitation and move towards equality, the equality that Black people have always deserved. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next week's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers two resolutions. A privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold public hearings to examine the impacts of and funding alternatives for an extension of the existing Broad Street subway line into the underserved Northeast along the Roosevelt Boulevard.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing, in conjunction with the city labor department and the office of the mayor, a joint task force on regulatory reform to reexamine the role and mission of the Philadelphia Department of Licenses and Inspections and its enforcement of the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, the Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Departmental Regulations of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, to recommend revisions to the code and changes to facilitate more effective enforcement of the code and to clarify the mission of various departments and agencies impacting businesses and workers in the city, to set a direction for future administrations and city council to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of all workers, residents, and businesses in the city.
Next week's calendar.
Councilman O'Neill offers a privilege resolution honoring and congratulating GQ Aviation on nearly a decade of service as a premier flight school at the Philadelphia Northeast Airport and recognizing its exceptional leadership in promoting diversity in the northeast Philadelphia community and aviation industry at large.
This week's calendar. Hold on, one sec. Hold on, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Today I'm introducing this resolution along with Councilman Johnson, chair of our city council transportation committee, honoring and congratulating GQ Aviation on nearly a decade of service to premier, as a premier flight school at the Northeast Philadelphia Airport, and recognizing its exceptional leadership in promoting diversity in the northeast Philadelphia community and aviation industry. GQ Aviation was founded in two thousand fifteen and is the only minority-owned private flight school in the northeast corridor. They are proud to tout a one-hundred-percent student passage rate. This is both small aircraft and helicopters. I was up there a couple of months ago, and really was an eye-opener for me. This person I'm about to mention, Faiz Yul Hussain, is here today, with us today, and I just want to welcome him and thank him for his contributions to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
If he's here, stand up.
Councilman Squilla offers one bill and one resolution, entitled in ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property to acquire on behalf of the city fee simple title or lesser interest by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise for the purpose of making, enlarging, connecting, extending, and operating and maintaining public parks for recreational use. Certain parcels of land generally bounded and located between Vine Street, Fremont Avenue, Eighth Street, and Twelfth Street.
Verdict committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of three-seventy-two, seven-oh-two Cantrell Street, six-thirteen, six-twenty-five, and seven-twenty-three Mercy Street, seven-thirty-seven Tree Street, five-thirty-five, five-thirty-seven, and six-oh-two Winton Street located in the First Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. And our next order of business is reports from committee, and the chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. Or report on the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Rules reports out of the committee eleven bills. I didn't even need a script for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee, to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, to which is referred Bill number two-three-oh-four-oh-seven, entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Bristol Street, Old York Road, Hunting Park Avenue, and Park Avenue. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-one-zero entitled in ordinance amending Chapter fourteen-five-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlay zoning districts to add an overlay zoning district pertaining to injection sites for narcotics. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-one-two entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by the Skookville River, Passyunk Avenue, Sixty-first Street, Lindbergh Boulevard, Gray's Avenue, Forty-Ninth Street, Pascal Avenue, and Gray's Ferry Avenue. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-three-seven entitled in ordinance amending Section fourteen-five-oh-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCA Neighborhood Commercial Overlay District by amending the East Falls Neighborhood Commercial Review Area. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-zero entitled in ordinance amending Section fourteen-four-six of the Philadelphia Code entitled SPSTA Sports Stadium Special Purposes District by expanding allowable signage in an area bounded by North Access Road, Eleventh Street, Terminal Avenue, and Broad Street. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-two entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Falkridge Street, Halls Orange Street, Margaret Street, and Duffield Street. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-three entitled in ordinance amending Section fourteen-five-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlay zoning districts by creating a new subsection entitled Warrington Affordable Housing Overlay District. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-six entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Fifty-Fourth Street, Chester Avenue, Fifty-Fifth Street, and Regent Street. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-seven entitled in ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Fifty-eighth Street, Springfield Avenue, Septa Railroad right-of-way, and Warrington Avenue. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-eight entitled in ordinance amending Chapter fourteen-five-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled overlay zoning districts by amending Section fourteen-five-fourteen entitled FNE Far-Northeast Overlay District, Section fourteen-five-fifteen entitled NE Northeast Overlay District, and Section fourteen-five-twenty-four entitled FDO Fourth District Overlay District by creating regulations for medical marijuana. And Bill number four-three-zero-four-five-five entitled in ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Johnson Street, Morton Street, Topahocken Street, and Septa, Chestnut Hill East Line, Haynes Street, Germantown Avenue, Rittenhouse Street, McCallum Street, Harvey Street, McCallum Street, Washington Lane, and Cherokee Street. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading of the eleven bills as recently have been submitted.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the eleven bills read by the clerk. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. The chair now recognizes Councilman Squilla for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports eight bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill number two-three-zero-four-zero-eight entitled in ordinance amending Chapter nineteen-thirty-two-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone, Economic Development District, and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-one-eight entitled in ordinance amending Chapter nineteen-thirteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled real estate taxes by requiring advertising in community papers, the availability of tax relief programs, residential foreclosure diversion programs, housing counseling assistance, and installment payment agreements to help neighborhood residents manage financial hardships. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-one-nine entitled in ordinance amending Chapter nineteen-thirteen-hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled real estate taxes to require notices of property assessed value and real estate tax liability, including information on the availability and application process for income-based payment agreements, homestead tax exemption for longtime owner occupants, and other tax relief programs. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-four-nine entitled in ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a community development block grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a housing opportunities for persons with AIDS grant. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-five-zero entitled in ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank National Association for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-five-one entitled in ordinance approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four capital budget, providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works, including the supplying of funds in connection therewith. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-five-two entitled in ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a supplemental service agreement to the service agreement between the city of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority relating originally to the financing of a home repair program for city homeowners, previously authorized by the city pursuant to ordinance Bill number one-seven-zero-eight-seven-eight of the council of the city, approved by the mayor on December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, authorizing the amendment of such program to include the turnkey program, bridge, and other loans for tax credit projects and other affordable housing production programs. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-five-three entitled in ordinance authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The chair again recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended. I submit the first reading this day of the eight bills that were just read by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the eight bills read by the clerk. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and those bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson for a report from the Committee on Law and Government.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Law and Government reports three bills and one resolution with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Law and Government, to which is referred Bill number two-three-zero-zero-zero-five entitled in ordinance amending Section nine-eleven-oh-two through eleven-twenty-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled verification of life partnerships by removing gendered language relating to same-sex and same-gender couples, expanding access to this life partnerships regardless of gender. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-one-one entitled in ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the city of Philadelphia, the proposal set forth in a resolution approved by council, proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter to provide for the creation of an office for people with disabilities. And Bill number two-three-zero-four-three-five entitled in ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled contracts and procurement to modify contract of reporting obligations related to women and minorities serving as board members and executive staff. And Resolution number two-three-zero-four-three-zero entitled a resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home or Charter to provide for the creation of an office for people with disabilities, to provide for the powers and duties of such office, to eliminate a duplicative office, and to otherwise provide for the incorporation of the office into the city government. Respectfully reports that it is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable, bills in resolution to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill numbers two-three-zero-zero-zero-five, two-three-zero-four-one-one, and two-three-zero-four-three-five.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the first reading this day of Bills number two-three-zero-zero-zero-five, two-three-zero-four-one-one, two-three-zero-four-three-five. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and Resolution number two-three-oh-four-three-oh will be placed on our final passes calendar at the next session of council, and the bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lozada for a report from the Committee on Public Property and Public Works.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee of Public Property and Public Works reports nine bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Public Property and Public Works, to which is referred Bill Number 230354, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the McGee Hospital for Convalescence doing business as McGee Rehabilitation Hospital, Jefferson Health, for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 1617 John F. Kennedy Boulevard. And Bill Number 2305355, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Interport Business Complex Associates for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 7801 Essington Avenue. And Bill Number 230357, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Impact Services Corporation for the use by the city of the premises located at 1952 East Allegheny Avenue. And Bill Number 230360, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest to all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by Castro Avenue, Richmond Street, Lewis Street, and North Delaware Avenue. And Bill Number 230361, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Municipal Authority for use by the city of the premises located at 8716 through 20 Frankfurt Avenue. And Bill Number 230362, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with BAM RBC1 for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 2807 through 2817 Southampton Road. And Bill Number 230363, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into a lease agreement with Hope Plaza Incorporated for use by the city of all or a portion of the premises located at 2150 West Somerset Street. And Bill Number 230413, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest in all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land containing approximately 23,595 square feet located in and about the area bounded by Market Street, 39th Street, Ludlow Street, and 40th Street. And Bill Number 230414, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania all or a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Belmont Avenue, Mantua Avenue, 42nd Street, and West Dorrit Avenue. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Lazada.
I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the nine bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of the nine bills just reported by the clerk. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion passes, and these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Squiller for a report on the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Thomas, the Committee of Streets and Services reports four bills with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 230277, entitled in ordinance establishing parking restrictions for certain commercial vehicles in the vicinity of Erdrick Street from Princeton Avenue to Tyson Avenue. And Bill Number 230307, entitled in ordinance amending Section 9208 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Sidewalk Cafes by permitting sidewalk cafes to be maintained on Frankfurt Avenue both sides from Harverson Avenue to Sheffield Avenue, Gottman Avenue both sides from Erdrick Street to Leon Street, Ryan Avenue both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leon Street, Robbins Avenue both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Mulberry Street, Sackey Street both sides from Frankfurt Avenue to Leveck Street, and the area bounded by Frankfurt Avenue, Leveck Street, Hawthorne Street, and Hellerman Street. And Bill Number 230441, entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations on certain streets in the area bounded by South 63rd Street, Passyunk Avenue, Essington Avenue, South 70th Street, and Lindbergh Boulevard. And Bill Number 230454, entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 11700 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Right of Way Management by revising requirements for obtaining access to and permits for construction in the underground portion of the right of way and making technical changes. And amending Chapter 9300, entitled Communication by deleting provisions relating to poles and overhead wires. Respectfully reports that it is considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 230277, 230307, 230441, and 230454.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 230277, 230307, 230441, and 230454. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and these bills will be on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Johnson for a report from the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities.
Thank you, Council President. The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome, Council President.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities, to which is referred Bill Number 220491, entitled in ordinance authorizing the Chief Executive Officer of Philadelphia International Airport to enter into a use, into use and lease agreements between the city and each of the airlines servicing Philadelphia International Airport. Respectfully reports that it is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Before I move for the adoption of the resolution, I do want to thank the team at the Philadelphia International Airport as well as American Airlines. This represents a $935 million investment in the Philadelphia International Airport with a goal of making us the number-one airport in our country. And so I do thank the airport team and working out a great deal with American Airlines to invest in our Philadelphia International Airport. With that being said, Council President, I move that the rules of council be permitted so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220491.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 220491. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and it will be on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our report from committee. And another bit is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had their first reading, and those bills will be placed on our second and final passage calendar at our next session of council. There are no additional bills on the first reading, so the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion concerning the resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda for consideration of the following resolutions on final passage calendars today. Numbers 23059, 459, 230494, 230495, 230496, 230503, 230504, 230506, 230507, 230226, 23027, 23028, 23029, and 230262.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit a consent agenda for the following bills on second reading and final passage calendar today. Numbers 230302, 220576, 230409, 230129, 230151, 230185, 230187, 230188, 230189, 230202, 230203, 23004, 230205, 230206, 230207, 230208, 230248, 230272, 230273, 230274, 230275, 230306, 230320, 230325, 230359, 230402, 23044, 23045, 23046, 23049, 230416, 230417, 230436, 230438, 230439, 230444, 230271, and 230324.
You said a mouthful, Councilman. It has been moved a second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Jones. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar today.
In addition to the bills and resolutions being brought on the consent agenda, I'd like to include the Bills Number 230186 and 230415. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before we consider the bills and resolutions on our final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. Your public comment session will go as follows. You must be concerning the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action today. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already done so, you may do so at a desk outside of the council chambers with the Sergeant of Arms. And once you have signed up, you will be called in order with your name appears on the sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, you will have three minutes, but we have a significant number of individuals signing up to testify, so we will have a two-minute limit. I would ask you to please adjust your testimony to reflect the two-minute time limit. In order to be fair, we want to hold faithfully to that time limit. So when you go to the podium, there will be a device on that podium. There's a green light. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. I want to thank you very much for your willingness to participate in your government in action, and thank you very much for your anticipated cooperation. I would ask Mr. Decker, please read the name, the first name on the list today.
The first speaker today is Dicky Knowles. Commenting on 230527.
First of all, I'd like to thank Councilmember Johnson for introducing the resolution. And I'm honored to be here, as well as Rob Holliday, and the Phillies would like to thank you also. This is an important topic for me because it's history. Dick Allen is our history in Philadelphia. I'm of Philadelphia now. I'm from North Carolina. I never thought I'd live in Philadelphia after 1980 World Series. I've been here 31 years. So I know a lot about the history of Philadelphia. I didn't know about the history of Dick Allen when I signed with the Phillies in 1975, but shortly afterwards, we brought Dick Allen back. And I remember we had this hotel down in Clearwater, Florida, where we had the minor-league players and the major-league players, and there was this invisible line that was drawn where we couldn't enter over into their space. But Dick Allen would enter over into our space. He would come over to the minor leagues. He would take a sanitary and fill it full of pennies, and come over to our side and play poker with all the minor-league players. My first appearance of Dick Allen was pretty impressive. I was in awe. I'd heard about the long home runs. We knew about the numbers. I heard and knew about the Rookie of the Year, the MVP, the 11 years of being the best in the game on the OPS. But I really didn't know Dick as a person. Oh, I heard, everybody's got a story in Philadelphia of a homerun he hit over Connie Max's roof, a homerun he hit over the building in left field in Yankee Stadium. Mickey Mantle once said that Dick Allen hit the ball harder and farther than anyone that he had ever seen. So when I met Dick as a person in 1994, when he came back to work for us in the Community Relations Department, I was really stunned to see what a great, loving, caring, selfless man he was. The only problem about Dick was when he stops to talk to you, you're going to be there a while. So every time I would wait on him, I would hear that he was coming to the ballpark, and I couldn't wait to see him. And we have a guard out that parks the cars, and he would stop and talk to the guard and ask you about your family, and was very sincere about wanting to know how you were doing. Then there's another guard before he entered the ballpark, and he would start, stop and talk to him, and we have policemen around our ballpark, and he would talk to them. Here's the impact that Dick Allen had on other people, as myself and Rob Holliday will attest to. He wanted to know about you. He would give you his shirt off his back. But when every police officer that I knew in Clearwater would talk about Dick Allen, they would say, "This man is really a sincere man. He's a gentle giant." And everybody that ever knew about Dick and his home runs and a 42-ounce bat thought he was 7'4" and 300 pounds of muscle. But Dick was a loving, as I stated, caring man. I want to read a comment that Jackie Robinson made. It's one of my favorite. "A life is not important except in the impact it has on other lives. Dick's impact in baseball may have been good at times, may have been bad at times, but the numbers speak for themselves. There's no teammate that ever played with Dick Allen that will not attest to the fact that he was a great teammate. I've never heard anybody say a bad word about Dick Allen." The one thing that I would like to share with you in closing with my remarks is the one thing that I think is most important to me, is Dick changed my life in many ways. I've never heard him speak evil or bad about one person, but I would do that from time to time. You know, that's baseball talk, and Dick would always remind me, "God made that person. They're very special." I think life happens in times of our, things happen in times of our life that are not coincidental. My mother used to walk, I lived on B and Allegheny Street in the third grade. I'm from North Carolina, but she moved up here. My mother used to walk around with me all the time and say, "God loves you. He made you. That makes you special." That was Dick Allen's message. Our big bond came on the Bible. I never met anyone in my life that knew it from the beginning to the end. Probably not many preachers know it, but Dick did. So there was a time when I got hit in the face one time with a line drive in the temple, throwing batting practice after my career. I had a concussion. They made me go to my room and stay there, and Dick stayed with me. We had adjoining rooms. He opened up the door, and about every 15 minutes, he would come in and say, "You still all right, aren't you?" As night fell, and it got to be about 10:00 or 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock at night, he would walk in and look at me and say, "You still alive?" I go, "Yeah, I'm still breathing." But the one important thing that he would do during that time of our fellowship would sit and tell me all the stories, all the stories that I read about in his perspective, all the stories that I heard about in his perspective. So I asked Dick. I said, "Dick, you ever, I mean, you have no animosity towards anything that ever happened in your career? Not even the press, only teasing." But he told me, he says, "No. I've forgiven everybody and everything, and I did play a part in that. And Dick Allen made the changes he needed to make, and I know right now he's in God's Hall of Fame. But in my opinion, Dick doesn't, just deserved to be in the National Baseball Hall of Fame. He needs to be there. There are going to be a better Hall of Fame with Dick Allen there. Thank you very much, and I urge you to..." Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony, champ.
The next speaker is Lisa Monique Jenkins Hayden.
Hi, my name is Lisa Monique Jenkins Hayden, and I am here in support of Bill Number 230271. I am a proud Philadelphian, specifically from North Philadelphia Strawberry Mansion section of the city. I stand on the shoulders of my grandmother and my mother, who also served the city in various capacities. I'm here because the businesses that surround the neighborhood that I grew up in, third-generation growing up in, I moved back as my primary residence three years ago when my mother passed, and the neighborhood just looks very different. These businesses that are allowed to be open 24 hours are a surprise to me, and I heard one of the council people say today that you can't be scared to serve, to serve the people that you are in the neighborhood of. I feel like there is not enough legislation to help us understand how to deal with intimate and personal relations when we make commerce out of a neighborhood. And so lots of the stores now there... And so lots of the stores now there are not inhabited or the people don't live where they're actually owning stores and businesses. And so this creates a lot of discord. Um, a few things that we've been trying to coordinate in my neighborhood is the license and inspection and police department and like a review process of how we handle complaints about the businesses. There was a recent shooting on Mother's Day. So this is the, the first year, um, I'm celebrating a Mother's Day after losing my mother in August of last year. And I woke up at 5:00 AM in the morning to a shooting of a woman that I knew she was shot in the face in a store. Um, this store actually is, does protect the people, the clerk behind the, uh, behind the, uh, like the glass screening. But it doesn't really protect the folks that come in to use it because there's only one way in and one way out. And so I really am in support of this bill is causing much nuisance in the community. And I would appreciate everyone's support to this bill as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is George Gordon. George Gordon. Commenting on 230271.
Hello, my name is George Gordon. I'm here to, in support with, uh, the proposal you just, you just heard from, uh, Lisa Jenkins, uh, about these nuisance, well, I call them nuisance, uh, businesses. These businesses are, uh, I think they, they get their license saying that they're opening up a grocery store, but as it turns out, it's a, uh, some sort of marijuana paraphernalia type of, of business. And, uh, they're in the neighborhood, they're popping up all over the place and they're creating a big disturbance in the neighborhoods. We have two on our corner. We have one on one side of the corner and another one on the other end of the corner of our block. And, um, they're, they're contracting a lot of traffic. A lot of kids are visiting these stores and you have long lines out of these stores and they're open 24 hours a day. And I don't see what kind of business they could have, uh, or what kind of need they would have to open 24 hours a day in your neighborhood. So, uh, we're just right now trying to fight back, uh, these businesses from popping up everywhere. And I'm hoping that everybody will try to support the, the, uh, business that she's just, the proposal she's just, uh, read to you. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Reverend Roy L. Jones, commenting on 230506.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Reverend Roy Jones. I represent two churches, uh, in New Jersey. I represent, uh, organizations in Philadelphia as well. And I'm here to speak about Resolution 230506. And the leaders putting that resolution together was our friend Mark Squiller. And we thank him and we're here today to thank Mark Squiller for, uh, putting this resolution before you and getting the support to bring it to this table. There are other, uh, council leaders, uh, Ms. Bass and Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson and Lozada and Mr. Driscoll and Isaiah Thomas were key cosponsors of this bill, so we thank you. But what I want to share with you today is that there's a crisis in the nation of Haiti. And it, it, it pales in comparison to what, uh, we are going through in this nation. And we are really going through some difficult times in this nation. So, uh, I, I want to share that in, in the nation of Haiti right now, there are no freedoms. There are no opportunities to walk to the, the grocery store. There, there are no opportunities to, uh, see their young children go to school. There are no opportunities for them to deal with basic human, uh, rights and deal with the basics of life, getting food, sheltering, that those sorts of things. So I want to thank this council for considering this resolution. But it's no accident that we're here today because Reverend Leo Sullivan also started a movement, a national and international movement dealing with, uh, ending apartheid in, in, in South Africa. So Team Haiti today, uh, recognizes that this council is, uh, it has made a historic, uh, move and step to start us on this national movement to bring light, visibility and voice to the crises in Haiti. So I want to thank every council member that votes for this resolution. And I want to thank all of those supporters that are here from Team Haiti that came out today to support this resolution and to thank you personally. But I want to remind you that there are gang rapes every day. There's violence every day. There's mayhem every day. There's, uh, uh, kidnappings every day in the nation of Haiti. So I want you to please consider voting for this resolution. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts that you took it into your hands to make this step today on behalf of standing in solidarity with the nation of Haiti. So we want to thank you and we appreciate you. And we want to remind you as you go home tonight that Haiti is in, in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would ask the chief clerk to please read the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Remy Fabine. Commenting on 230506.
Good morning. My name is Fabienne Renee. I'm Haitian and member of Team Haiti USA. I'm here today to support the bill 23506. Let's start by thanking Reverend, uh, Roy L. Jones of Monzayon Congregation for the outstanding work on behalf of Haiti. Reverend Jones, the level of your advocacy elevates Haiti to its rightful place as a nation. The first free state to emerge from slavery. Thank you for your dedicating your time to helping shape a prosperous future for our country. Today is a, it is a feeling that is in the hall of city council in Philadelphia. The birthplace of modern democracy, we address our thoughts on Haiti, a nation in crisis, fighting for its democratic rights to overcome its misfortunes and to succeed. We are sure that you all know what is happening in Haiti. We are witnessing in the 21st century, the disintegration of a nation before our eyes, before the eyes of the world, world. And the big powerful democratic countries have stood hardly and failed for years and months to seriously help solve a problem that does themselves grossly help to create. And to the media, as with any tragedy that affects black lives. The people dying in Haiti are just on a significant fact of life. And if, of our lives don't matter, it's baffling that in 21st century, people still see orders that way, based slowly on the color of the skin. People need to know the roots of the current crisis in Haiti. You can find the answers in two words, greed and weakness. In the aftermath of the 2010 earthquake, Haiti received billions of dollars in reconstruction funds, more than 3 billions in low interest loans from the state of Venezuela alone. Uh, all these funds were plundered by corrupt Haitian leaders and complicity with orders. So we are here today to thank, uh, um, the deputy whip, Squiller, and all the other city council for a stand up and taking over this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please read the next name of our speaker.
The next speaker is Brigitte, Brigitte Vanny, commenting on 230506.
I am Brigitte Vanny from Team Haiti USA. And our organization really wants to thank you from the bottom of our heart, Reverend Jones, for helping us shape the prospect of a future for Haiti. We, the people of Haiti, know what kind of country we want. Our people want a country where they can be productive at building. Our people want to a country where they can be productive at building good lives for themselves and their family. Where they can fulfill their potential as they do elsewhere. Our people can, given the right circumstances. We will always be grateful to you for supporting our people's struggle for freedom and economic justice. We thank each of you, honorable members of the council, deputy whip, Mark Squiller, Cindy Bass, Quercy Lozada, Catherine Richardson, Mike Drip, Amendriscoll, and Isaiah, Isaiah Thomas, the sponsors of the Truth and Reconciliation Resolution of Haiti, that we pray will lead at bringing light and fair solution to the ills of Haiti. In an organized, diligent and coherent manner. Please contact our elected officials, ask our government to support the will of the Haitian people. Tell our government to sever its ties with these corrupt regimes destroyers of people's dreams. All Haitians ask, all they ask for is to live in a democratic, well governed, corruption free Haiti. We shouldn't allow the wicked to do as they want. And please, they are honest and well qualified Haitians who can do a great job at building a better future for Haiti. What would anyone think that hardship, a bad life is the only fate of the Haitian people, what they deserve? Those who still view our people this way are mistaken. We want, we will not, I'm sorry, we will work on it until we make Haiti a prosperous state, a state that our founders and those who love progress are proud of. Haitian can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can have the chief, chief clerk, please call the name of the next speaker.
The next speaker, Madam Chair, is Charles Celesteen. Commenting on 230506.
We thank you all for being here today to support the Haitian people in his struggle. It doesn't have to be that way. Haitians do well everywhere we are. Why can we not do it in Haiti? It's an indication that there is something basically wrong with the way the country is governed, and we want to change that. When we, when we came to Philadelphia, this is a city that inspired, every time you think about Philadelphia, you get to think about freedom, liberty, democratic right. What happened in Haiti is not by accident. The way we took, we had our independence. Imagine a bunch of slaves with no property of the, of the time, not even for five minutes, managed to congregate together and to organize the, the rebellion that will bring them to independence. And from there, we were totally isolated, no partners to do business with. But now we live in, we are living in different time. And we can change that. Instead of looking at us like some kind of a pariah nation, but as partners. And we will do good for America, and that will do good for America. A community of immigrants, imagine what that do for this country. That mean we are connected with the rest of the world in a very particular way. Uh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will, we going to change things in Haiti. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony today. Mr. Clark, please read the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Terrence McAllier. Commenting on 230415.
I ask hopefully that I could get a little, little extra time to, to speak on Mr. Driscoll's other bill too. But the thing I'm here to talk about is-
Please state your name for the record and then proceed.
My name is Terrence McAllier. I'm from the Yalney section of Philadelphia. My, I don't represent any individuals or groups involved in, uh, in any of this, uh, street activity, but my own opinion and observation. I've watched drag racing happen in Philadelphia for years. And they've asked for a place to go and do it safely off the streets. Now they have drifting and, and other, uh, sports of their kind. And they really need to have a place off the streets sponsored by the city to do it safely and structurally proper. It's too far to go to Atco or to Maple Grove for drag racing or those activities. And for city to, for the city to provide that here would reduce stress and increase the productivity and decency of our young people of all races. On the second bill regarding the transportation up the boulevard, because of all the underground infrastructure, it would be absolutely cost prohibitive to do a subway, but would make sense to do an elevated line all the way up to Bucks County. And you could come up somewhere between Ninth Street and C Street on the boulevard in the middle and be able to go all the way up to the top of the city to give people a proper transportation system to fulfill their needs to be able to go shop and to go to work every day safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, please read the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Gerald Pierre. Commenting on 230506.
My name is Gerald Pierre. I'm a member of, uh, Team Haiti. I'm here to, uh, let you folks know that we thank you, all of you that, uh, passed this, this resolution. And mine is going to be short, so again, thank you. Team Haiti is here. We have, uh, as you know, Brigitte, Fabienne, Charles, Dr. Rose, Mr. Jones, Roy Jones, our Reverend and his wife here. So we thank you in, in helping Haiti. Right now, the country of Haiti is like nonexistence on the planet because gangs are everywhere. You can go north, you can go south, you are just stuck in the capital. And daily, we have rapes, people being kidnapped for ransom. By the way, when they kidnap somebody, they don't ask for the Haitian, uh, money. They ask US, and it's $300,000, $400,000. Nobody ever make that money in Haiti as working. So Haiti need help. And thank you very much for that resolution.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, please read the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Chenet LaRose. Commenting on 230506.
Yes, okay. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It was really a good pleasure for me to be here.
Please state your name for the record and then proceed.
To say something about not only Haiti... Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. My name is Dr. Chenet LaRose, and I'm a member of Haiti USA team. And I don't know how to express my thought and everything about Philadelphia and Haiti. And I can say that Philadelphia is a good, good place for me and give me a lot of opportunity. And, and also, this is a city of borderwood, as everybody knows. And so I have to remember, remind everybody that Haiti was the second country in the world after US to fight for liberty and everything where... And we have in a situation that we need USA to help Haiti. And I think Philadelphia, this is a really a good place to, to be here. And also, I have to express my gratitude to Honorable Councilwoman Bass. And beside her also, I have to say a few thanks to, even though she's not really here, I remember this is Honorable Council Blackwell. And a lot of people too, I have to say to, 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 I have to say that also. So please, help Haiti. Haiti need you. Without you, I don't think Haiti can go any further. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. LaRose. Mr. Clerk, please call the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Kalif Alexander.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Kalif Alexander, or some just call me Kalif the Reparationist. But I am here today to speak on behalf of Councilman Gaudier's bill that she introduced in regards to reparations. First, I would like to say that the United States of America, we rebuilt many countries, Japan, Germany. We're giving lots of money to Ukraine right now. And Black Americans who built this country brick by brick, we deserve reparations. It's not a handout, it's something that is just due. When we begin to look at the relationship between Juneteenth, because I haven't heard a mention of Juneteenth this entire time since I've been here today, there's a relationship between Juneteenth and reparations. That relationship is, once you gain your freedom, you are supposed to receive economic justice, or shall I say 40 acres and a mule. Juneteenth became a national holiday a few years ago, thanks to the work of the likes of Ron Brown, my mentor, known as Mr. Juneteenth in Philadelphia, and many others. And when we're looking at that relationship, yes, Juneteenth has become a national holiday. In Juneteenth 1865, we were physically freed, but now we at a point where we have to take the mental shackles off of our people in the city of Philadelphia, and that mental shackle is what we see going on today. We have a violence crisis, we have a poverty crisis, and we have a genocide crisis. All of these things have been created, in my eyes, by the government. Maybe not you all sitting in these seats, but historically, the government has done some very wrongs to Black Americans. So needless to say, reparations is just due. Juneteenth is our Independence and our Freedom Day, and I hope that you all can, you know, acknowledge that a little more as we continue fighting the fight. Lastly, I would like, I would like to end on this. A great folk hero once said, "Kids are losing lives, and they got me scared of losing mine, and if I hold my tongue about it, I'll get crucified." I wrote this on a bumpy flight on a summer night, flying over Chattanooga, out here trying to spread the movement. And the movement is reparations now for Black Americans. The movement is celebrate Juneteenth for Black Americans. And the movement is to have a self-identification to be the best of who you are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, please read the name of our next speaker.
The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Landis, founder of WildFoodies.org and SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I support Resolutions 210913 and 230432. As pesticides continue to be sprayed on city parks in violation of city laws, the good news is that the Wild Foodies of Philly and other groups will not be required to obtain a permit in order to take small tours through city-owned parks. I want to thank my attorney, George Bicetto, for representing me in this matter. The other good news is that so many of our council members are standing up to the mayor and declaring that they do not want safe injection sites in their districts. Although there are concerns about the effectiveness of zoning restrictions that can be overturned by a zoning board appointed by the mayor who supports safe injection sites. The big question is this: Why are safe injection sites a possibility at all? Taking illegal drugs is still illegal. Safe injection sites clearly aid and abet an illegal activity. So why does City Council have to do anything about this matter at all? The general question, the, the general answer is that our government, at every level, no longer feels bound by the law. The federal government has opened up our nation's borders to illegal entry, which includes drug and human traffickers. Our state government has stood by and let it happen, and our city government has welcomed them in. Plus, our city government is allowing rampant violation of our state and local public safety laws, so it is no wonder that chaos is the result. The needle exchange program, which has dumped millions of needles into our neighborhoods, the lack of effective and mandatory rehabilitation facilities, plus the medical profession and pharmaceutical industry that has helped to create this catastrophe, including the Methadone debacle, should all be up for discussion and review under the Sunshine Act. We need many more hearings to get to the bottom of what's really gone wrong, and I strongly suggest they be in person with a virtual component for the disabled and those who can't attend. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, can we have you please read the name of our next speaker?
Kevin Upsher. Commenting on 230496.
I think he had to leave, he had to leave.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Madam Chair.
Okay, and that concludes today's public comment. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all of the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. The clerk will now read the titles of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda.
Resolution number 230459 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 924, 927, 928, and 938 Edgely Street, 926 and 928 French Street, 2106, 2112, 2140, 2141, 2142, 2143, 2151, 2166, 2170, 2172, 2215, 2217, and 2219 North Franklin Street, 2112, 2130, 2144, and 2214 North Marshall Street, 2105, 2107, 2109, 2110, 2111, 2112, 2113, 2119, 2121, 2120, 2133, 2140, 2143, 2146, 2150 North Percy Street, 904, 910, and 912 West Susquehanna Avenue, 2102, 2109, 2126, 2128, 2130, 2131, 2134, 2135, 2136, 2150, and 2210 North Seventh Street, 2101, 2113, 2121, 2155, 2167 through 69, 2201 North Eighth Street, 2124, 2126, 2132, 2150, and 2165 North Ninth Street, 2121 North Tenth Street, located in the Fifth Councilmatic District. And Resolution number 230494 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1901 North Ringgold Street, 1910 North 24th Street, located in the Fifth Councilmatic District. And Resolution number 230495 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple titled 815 West First Street in the Fifth Councilmatic District. And Resolution number 230496 entitled a resolution also naming the 2200 block of 29th Street as Henry Sly Schley Way to honor the life and memory of renowned North Philly barber shop owner and barber Henry Schley. And Bill number 230503 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 759, 761, 763, 773, 779, and 783 Palace Street and 4041 Cambridge Street, located in the Third Councilmatic District. And Resolution number 230504 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Mantua Urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 3701 Brown Street, 3703 Brown Street, 3705 through 3711 Brown Street, 3713 through 17 Brown Street, 3719 through 33 Brown Street, and 3700 through 3706 Mantua Avenue. And Resolution number 230506 entitled a resolution showing, showing support for Philadelphia Haitians, Team Haiti, and Haitian-Americans during the crisis in the nation of Haiti, and urging the administration of the City of Philadelphia and Philadelphia City Council to demonstrate unwavering support for the people of Haiti. And Resolution number 230507 entitled a resolution also naming South Broad Street between Lombard and South Streets as Jerry Blavett Way to honor the life and legacy of South Philadelphia legendary entertainer and disc jockey Jerry Blavett, also known as the geezer with the heater and the boss with the hot sauce. And Resolution number 230226 entitled a resolution appointing Cheryl McConnell to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And Resolution number 230227 entitled a resolution appointing Laura Bayer to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And Resolution number 230228 entitled a resolution appointing Nathan Muknik to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And Resolution number 230229 entitled a resolution appointing Serena Quick to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion. And Resolution number 230262 entitled a resolution appointing Vince Latuka to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved properly. Second, that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. Councilwoman Brooks, did you need to be recognized? You're good? Okay, thank you. We now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular and second final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 230302 entitled an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the St. Joseph's University Master Plan related to a proposed residence hall and student center and the addition of six existing buildings to the master plan and to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land, all in the area bounded by City Avenue, 52nd Street, Woodbine Avenue, Winfield Avenue, Overbrook Avenue, Upland Way, and Drexel Road. And Bill number 220576 entitled an ordinance authorizing Howard Foreman to install, own, and maintain various encroachments, including but not limited to, a proposed fence and other structures at 1338 through 44 Rising Sun Avenue. And Bill number 230049 entitled an ordinance authorizing the construction installation, ownership use, and maintenance of a sidewalk cafe at 425 through 449 Spring Garden Street. And Bill number 230129 entitled an ordinance authorizing the paving of Boston Place from 10th Street to 11th Street. And Bill number 230151 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Port Royal Avenue between Henry Avenue and Old Line Road. And Bill number 230185 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12919 of the Philadelphia Code entitled on-street parking of boats, motorhomes, truck campers, and vending carts by providing for further regulation of semi-trailer and truck tractor parking. And Bill number 230187 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Conshohocken Avenue between Belmont Avenue and City Avenue. And Bill number 230188 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of Lancaster Avenue between Woodbine Avenue and Sherwood Road. And Bill number 230189 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Tower Street and Pensdale Street, Ripka Street and Wild Street, Mansion Street and Hermitage Street, Green Lane and Maniunk Avenue, Lorison Street and Markle Street, Terrace Street and Roxborough Avenue, Dexter Street and Monastery Avenue, Cotton Street and Maniunk Avenue. And Bill number 230202 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Comack Street and Sedgley Avenue, Rising Sun Avenue and North 13th Street, Victoria Street and Germantown Avenue, North 13th Street and Luzerne Street. And Bill number 230203 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of George Street and North Fourth Street, George Street and North Second Street, Shacklemaxon Street and Girard Avenue, Ridge Avenue and Mount Vernon Street, American Street and Poplar Street, North Fourth Street and Poplar Street, Mount Vernon Street and North 11th Street. And Bill number 230204 entitled an ordinance establishing, establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Green Street and North 16th Street, Mount Vernon Street and North 15th Street, Mount Vernon Street and North 16th Street, Mount Vernon Street and North 19th Street, North 15th Street and Fairmont Avenue, North 23rd Street and Fairmont Avenue. And Bill number 230205 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations on both sides of Conshohocken Avenue between Monument Road and Falls Road. And Bill number 230206 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on both sides of 66, 66th Street between City Avenue and Woodbine Avenue. And Bill number 230207 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Chadwick Street and Washington Avenue, South 26th Street and Bainbridge Street. And Bill number 230208 entitled an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code by adding a new section prohibiting the parking or maintaining of semi-trailers and truck tractors at residential properties. And Bill number 230248 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Arlington Street and Ringgold Street, Wellington Street and Montgomery Avenue, Gratch Street and Fountain Street, Stow Street and North 15th Street, North 19th Street and Burke Street. And Bill number 230272 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations, parking regulations on both sides of North Carler Street between West Girard Avenue and Poplar Street. And Bill number 230273 entitled an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill number 200578 entitled an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades in a portion of city plan number 46 S by striking from the city, city plan and vacating Penrose Ferry Road from Penrose Avenue towards terminus northeastwardly therefrom, by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill number 230274 entitled an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Comack Street and Johnston Street. And Bill number 230275 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation in the vicinity of North 50 in the vicinity of North 51st Street and Brown Street. And Bill Number 230306 entitled an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 3931 Walnut Street. And Bill Number 230320 entitled an ordinance establishing a no truck parking regulation on the westwardly side of Belmont Avenue between Monument Road and Conshohocken Avenue. And Bill Number 230325 entitled an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of pedestrian light poles with accompanying LED luminaries and concrete planer boxes in the vicinity of 1325 North Beach Street. And Bill Number 230326 entitled an ordinance authorizing Northern Liberty's Business Improvement District to own, operate, and maintain certain lighting encroachments along the 400 and 500 blocks of 2nd Street. And Bill Number 230358 entitled an ordinance revising park regulations for the north side of 49th Street, Pascal Avenue to Gray's Avenue, the east side of Gray's Avenue, 49th Street to Lindbergh Boulevard, and the east side of Lindbergh Boulevard, Gray's Avenue to Harley Avenue. And Bill Number 230359 entitled an ordinance delegating to the Streets Department the authority to establish certain parking restrictions by regulation on both sides of Walnut Street between 48th Street and 63rd Street. And Bill Number 230402 entitled an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 180560 entitled an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 250 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portion of Montor Street from Adams Avenue to Falkridge Street, by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 230404 entitled an ordinance authorizing the procurement commission to enter into a contract for the construction of a sewer and a pertinent work required to provide public sewer service in the 1200 block of North Newkirk Street. And Bill Number 230405 entitled an ordinance establishing park regulations in the vicinity of North Street and North 15th Street and North 19th Street, Page Street and North 16th Street and North 28th Street and North 23rd Street, Monument Street and North 17th Street. And Bill Number 230406 entitled an ordinance authorizing the installation, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments in the vicinity of 1907 through 1915 Walnut Street. And Bill Number 230409 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize a bicycle lane in each direction on Bartram Avenue from 84th Street to Essington Avenue. And Bill Number 230416 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on East Market Street from 2nd Street to 6th Street. And Bill Number 230417 entitled an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled designation of bicycle lanes to authorize a bicycle lane in the southbound direction on North Second Street from Race Street to Market Street. And Bill Number 230436 entitled an ordinance establishing park regulations in the vicinity of Randolph Street and Cambridge Street, Parrish Street and North 13th Street, Oriana Street and Poplar Street, Oriana Street and George's Street. And Bill Number 230438 entitled an ordinance authorizing revision of lines and grades in a portion of city plan number 230 and 289 by placing on the city plan two irregularly shaped areas, one located along the northeastern side of Ridge Avenue and extending from a point northwest of the Wasehaken Creek to a point approximately 424 feet further northwestwardly therefrom, and the other located along the southwest side of Ridge Avenue extending from a point northwest of the Wasehaken Creek northwestwardly to the southwest side of Main Street. And Bill Number 230439 entitled an ordinance adding parking regulations on North 34th Street between Indiana Avenue and Commissioner Street. And Bill Number 230444 entitled an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a sidewalk café in the vicinity of 4333 Spruce Street. And Bill Number 230271 entitled an ordinance amending Section 9105 of the Philadelphia Code entitled penalties and Chapter 94400 of the Philadelphia Code entitled responsible business operations to further define nuisance businesses and provide for additional enforcement and penalties. And Bill Number 230324 entitled an ordinance officially renaming and designating Bridesburg Park located at 3101 Orthodox Street in the city of Philadelphia as Robert A. Borsky Park, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills haven't been read on two different days. The question for each bill now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, please call the roll. When being called, each council member shall vote with aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilman Driscoll. Councilwoman Gaudier. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Harity. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Lozada. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman Phillips. Councilman Squilla. Councilwoman Vaughn. Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members having voted affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 230186.
An ordinance authorizing an increase in the non-electoral indebtedness of the city within the Pennsylvania constitutional limit, authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, and authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for an amendment to Bill Number 230186.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer an amendment to Bill Number 230186. A copy of that amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Can I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion was signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And Bill Number 230186 has been amended. Bill Number 230186 as amended will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 230415.
An ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code by providing for prohibitions relating to nuisance vehicles.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll for an amendment to Bill Number 230415.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 230415. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Thank you. All those in favor, the motion was signed by by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Bill Number 230415 has been amended, and Bill Number 230415 as amended will be placed on the final passes calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution honoring and congratulating the champions of the week, the youth leaders and young filmmakers of Big Picture Alliance, who will be premiering their original short films at this year's Big Picture Film Festival this month, introduced by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson on behalf of Councilmember Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson. You say who? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Thomas, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Councilman Johnson, did you need to be recognized?
No.
Okay. No problem. All right, thank you. Good, Mr. Decker, I'm sorry.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Safety to conduct hearings regarding the use of unmanned aircraft systems, also known as drones, as an additional law enforcement tool that would enhance public safety in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Jones on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I move for the adoption of the resolution on your behalf.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution urging the members of the National Baseball Hall of Fame's Golden Era Committee to nominate and elect former Philadelphia Phillies great Dick Allen to the National Baseball Hall of Fame as part of the class of 2027, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to conduct a hearing on the city of Philadelphia's capacity to prepare individuals of all educational backgrounds for careers in the growing life sciences industry with a focus on the cell and gene therapy subsector, introduced today by Councilwoman Gaudier, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson, and Councilman Kenyatta Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaudier.
Thank you, Council President. I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold public hearings to examine the impacts of and funding alternatives for an extension of the existing Broad Street subway line into the underserved northeast along the Roosevelt Boulevard, introduced today by Councilman Driscoll.
Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Move for the adoption of the resolution?
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that motion is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating GQ Aviation on nearly a decade of service as a premier flight school at the Philadelphia Northeast Airport and recognizing its exceptional leadership in promoting diversity in the northeast Philadelphia community and aviation industry at large, introduced today by Councilman O'Neil.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Speeches on the half of the majority? Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, colleagues, I rise to acknowledge a lot of the good work that has been done by this council. First, you, President Clark, by insisting that we have a chief public safety officer for the city of Philadelphia. That was forward thinking and I think will bear fruit towards the ultimate goal of public safety and anti-gun violence. And I'll make my point. Over the weekend, yesterday, there was a Alany mother shot in the head with her two-year-old child. In addition, same day, there was an Uber driver shot, same day, other shootouts. There were 45 shells at the site of the mother and child caught in a crossfire, 45 shells. I want to give you context on what that is. The St. Valentine's Day massacre in Chicago, which was chronicled in movies, and there were 70 shots, seven dead. That is only a bad weekend in the city of Philadelphia. I would further say that at the shootout at the OK Corral, there were 40-plus shells accounted for that day with only three fatalities. That's a bad Saturday at a pop-up shootout at a festival in the city of Philadelphia. But the good news is that I absolutely believe, colleagues, that there is the ingredients to solve gun violence and public safety within the city of Philadelphia currently through programs, through resources that exist. And you may say, Jones, why do you think that? Because there are rays of light all throughout the city. The problem is that when things happen independently, uncoordinated, they only make a mess. When they begin to coordinate, they make beautiful music with pianos, they draw Picasso's because the fingers are coordinator. The chief public safety officer that you insisted upon can be the coordinator, conductor of the beautiful music. There are good things happening. My colleague, Councilmember Lozada, is with Councilmember Harity, Councilmember Squilla, fighting for a real plan for Kensington, not just the excellent articulation of the problem. In the second hearing, she's going to call upon agencies to tell me what you are going to do to solve the problem, not just point it out, but solve it. Kathy Gilmore Richardson, a long time ago, before it was popular, said conflict resolution needed to be in the curriculum of every school so that in the playground, in the sandbox, kids understand you're going to have disagreements. It doesn't have to result in violence. There are, every day, you argue about what the captives in Kensington have to live with. But the ingredients are that there are schools in 11 zip codes in the city of Philadelphia that provide 90% of the inmates on State Road. We have to coordinate all these activities. When we knee-jerk things, we closed St. Gabe's, we closed Glenn Mills, but we didn't realize that we would have overcrowding at the Juvenile Justice Center, young people sleeping on the floors of the gymnasium as we speak, creating dangerous situations where corrections officers and social workers are forced to come in between war and youth and get pummeled and put in a hospital that spills over to our six facilities on State Road. All of these things independently happening have consequences one to the other. And so we have to create, and I'm calling for, a citywide, state-affiliated, federally-attended crime summit, anti-violence summit in the city of Philadelphia over the course of the summer. Why? Because the 100th mayor is going to have to come up with a game plan, not just excellent articulation of the problems, as one member that we know often says, but we got to come up with a plan, and the members in this body have to help them. And I believe that we've begun that process, sir, but I think we need, the job is still yet to be done. And so as we start to take SEPTA, as we start to save school district, and to begin to pull everybody in a room and not point at the problem, but point towards solutions, I think we have the ability to orchestrate the solutions to some of this stuff. It is not beyond our grips. We have Estelle Richmond, who's working with the private sector. They understand, finally, that this is not just a them problem, it's an all of our problem. On the news, they talked about San Francisco. They're closing major malls in urban areas because we don't have our stuff together to be able to stop theft, people just coming in and randomly sacking stores. They're saying, we're out of here. We'd rather go up to, we were talking about it, King of Prussia. You know, when my kids go out, they say, yeah, we're going to dinner. I say, well, yeah, we can go to McCormick and Smith's right down here. No. We'll take that 40-minute ride up to where they believe it is safe. So the private sector, Estelle Richmond, Comcast, and others, are putting together a game plan. If we coordinate these things, Mr. President, colleagues, I think we have the solutions. Vanessa Harley has done good work, but we had to add that to the tools on the tool belt. I challenge us over the summer to come up with a summit to talk about anti-gun violence and crime prevention strategies for the city of Philadelphia. Because until we do that, moving a stadium on Market Street, you got a lot of work to do before that. You have 200 kids that have 200 parents that have been on. My colleague, Cindy Bass, talks about, and I applaud her and I plagiarize it. My colleague Cindy Bass talks about, and I applaud her and I plagiarize it to a degree, what do you do when you realize that the shooter lives with you? Well, you create solutions like toss a mattress Friday. And we got to really have uncomfortable conversations about what's really going on in our respective neighborhoods and be able to cowboy up to the plate to help the next mayor, to help come up with solutions that are plausible. We throw money at it. And it's right to add resources, but resources without accountability. If it ain't measured, it ain't managed. And we're going to do some things differently. We had, and I'm going to close on this, I had the children of the Muslim community for Muslim Day come down here. And they loved the ceilings and they sat in your seats, spun around, some of them, way too more comfortable than they should. But when they got done and they had a press conference, they looked at me and respective you and said, what are you going to do different? Because we still dying. And so the answer to that has to be some concerted thinking, cooperative planning, breaking down silos. You took us to Camden, to Chester, to Trenton, and what we saw that was different was that the stakeholders could be in a room, breathe the same air, and work towards solutions with a lot less resources than we had. And so I challenge all of us, it's ain't political, this is for the future of our city, to work together, to come up with that crime summit, to get the right stakeholders in the room with the right solutions so that we empower the next mayor to be able to solve this damn problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm sure we will accept that challenge and move forward. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just a few brief announcements, but also want to acknowledge a resolution that was passed early on that I paid attention to, but didn't get a chance to comment on because we're dealing with the same issue in the Second Councilmatic District, and that's Councilman Driscoll's bill around addressing drag racing. And for me, in the Second Councilmatic District, particularly around Estetina Avenue, particularly around Patterson Avenue where the stadiums are, we've been dealing with this issue of drag racing for several years, right? We had a couple fatalities before in the past, and so I do applaud your efforts in making sure we highlight that issue, but also taking aggressive stance and approach where individuals are engaging in those type of activities, then not only that they can actually get fined, but can also actually lose their vehicle. And so I thank you for stepping up to the plate and addressing that issue because it's definitely, it's a quality of life issue, but it's also a matter of life and death from a public safety standpoint. And also just want to acknowledge the work of the young Councilman Phillips from the mighty Northwest, who decided to take on an issue that's very, very, it can be viewed as controversial, right? But nevertheless, as members of this body, as leaders in this city, right, sometimes we have to take positions that are unpopular to kind of reclaim a level of lawlessness, a level of, I would like to call it, what should be expected in terms of how we support our young people, right? And so when you talk about people walking down the street, you can do as you please, but if you are walking down the street in 90-degree weather, right, with a mask over your face, right, and I'm a different type of elected official, right, I come from the streets, I keep my ear to the streets. And I've been told several different times, Councilman, the reason why homicide having a problem, some of these homicides are taking place, the mask. And so, you know, although it's not a be-all, end-all solution, but also when it comes to public properties that we control, it goes toward at least setting a tone, and if not, at least sending a message, right? Because saying that Councilman Jones has said, that Cindy always says, a young person got a key, goes to somebody's home, right? And so we want to try to figure out ways to be supportive overall. I was watching how in the Third Councilmatic District this weekend, it was like 100 kids, 46 in Market. And I recall Jamie, like, yo, like, you know, he cutting up. And it's never to criminalize them, it's never to demonize them, because again, I come from that environment, everybody knew I got my first gun charge at the age of 16. I've been down juvie hall as a young kid, so you're not talking to an elected official who hasn't walked the walk and talked the talk. And it took somebody to see some things in myself that I didn't see as a young man that kind of helped me become the person who I am today. But I also was held accountable for my actions, right? And my mom also, we don't come from a pristine environment, but my mom also made sure that at the end of the day, she wanted to know who I was hanging out with when I came home, don't come in this house with something I didn't give you, right? And so, you know, we got to support our young people, support our families, right? But also hold ourselves as a people to a level of not being enablers, but a different level of expectation. At least that's where I come from, and we can address it comprehensively when it comes to the issue of public safety. And so those two things, they kind of stuck out to me in terms of public policy and things that we're working on. But I'm just going to be, on a lighter note, mention a couple of events that's coming up that I wanted to reiterate for people. So on this Wednesday, June 21st, at the Marriott Courtyard, at the Navy Yard, we'll be having a Doing Business with the City workshop and forum. We'll be partnering with SEPTA, Rebuild, the Navy Yard, which has a 10-year master plan of development that's going to be taking place, the Philadelphia International Airport, the Port of Philadelphia, and the Philadelphia School District will have presentations on how to do business with the city of Philadelphia. I'm a strong advocate that if we're going to move the city of Philadelphia forward, everybody has to have a seat at the table. We're the number-one big city when it comes to poverty. We carry that title. But nevertheless, though, if we're not aggressively making sure we're putting people at the table who wouldn't necessarily always have that opportunity to get the great financial and economic resources and support that are available, if we're not aggressively and being attentive about making sure people are at the table, then I still believe that we'll continuously carry that title. And we all know there's a direct link between poverty and the crime and gun violence that we have seen. Councilman Guardias did a study in the past that shows in the higher zip codes where we see crime are zip codes where we see poverty. And so there's a direct correlation. And so to everyone that's listening, again, that's going to be next Wednesday, June 21st, at the Philadelphia Navy Yard, at 10:30 a.m., we're going to have a Doing Business with the City of Philadelphia workshop and forum, and we want as many people as possible to come out and to participate. Also, on Friday, June 30th, save the date, we will be having a street renaming for a gentleman by the name of Kevin Parker. He used to own a restaurant called Miss Tootsie's. I'm quite sure everybody had a chance to eat some of his catering, but most importantly, visit his establishment. And so I want you to save that date, come out if you can, as we honor the life and legacy of a person who meant a whole lot to individuals here in the city of Philadelphia. And last but not least, since I've been asked several times about an event that I had to cancel, we will be having a Point Breeze Night Market on Thursday, July 6th, on Point Breeze Avenue from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Now, welcome everyone to come on out, participate, get some good food, we have some vegan food trucks for all those that may not eat meat, but you can also come get some ribs as well. So as we wrap up, I want to thank my colleagues for these flowers, as the men in city council celebrate Father's Day weekend. And so we want to thank you, we appreciate the flowers and the love to all the fellows that hope you'll kick your feet up this weekend and chill. And he said, no, aye, and relax. But to all the fathers in here, Happy Father's Day. Enjoy this weekend. I'm a strong advocate about fatherhood and, most importantly, the role that it plays in our society, looking out for our little ones and our family. So Happy Father's Day, everyone. Take care.
Thank you, Councilmember Phillips.
Thank you, Councilman Swella. I just wanted to simply acknowledge the young woman and the two-year-old in Alany that Councilman Curtis Jones mentioned. To me, it's very disheartening to see this happen in our city, and I just want everyone to keep them in your prayers. I'm going to be continuing to work closely with our police captain in our district to kind of see what we can do to support that family going forward. Additionally to that, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Councilman Mike Driscoll for all of his leadership with the I-95 circumstance that's taking place in the northeast section of Philadelphia. And I just wanted to say thank you, Councilman Driscoll, for all that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll?
Well, thank you, colleagues, for the support you've provided me this past week. You've all reached out to me, and whatever you need is, that's what I've heard from every one of you, and I'm truly grateful. At 6:17 on Sunday morning, 6:17 a.m., I was awoken to an explosion, which later turned out to be a vehicle carrying 8,500 gallons of fuel couldn't navigate the exit ramp and flipped on its side and exploded. And the heat, as you know, has crippled I-95. But what I witnessed when I got on the scene that day was not only tragedy, but was people coming together. Managing Director Tumara Alexander was already there, we had all the first responders, the fire marshal, you name it, working collaboratively together. That very day, Mayor Kenny came, Governor Shapiro came to the site, Senator Casey arrived the next day, U.S. Congressman Brendan Boyle came to the site, U.S. Secretary Pete Buttigieg came to the site, and Pennsylvania Secretary Mike Carroll came to the site. And all of them pledged the full resources of the city government, of the state government, and of the federal government to get that critical artery back up and running, because all the commerce, 55% of the gross national product is used as I-95. So we know for the supply chain, for the small businesses, for the betterment of commerce in America, that we have to get that highway up and running. And it was heartwarming to see all levels of government working together, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that today, because we're going to get that done in record time. We have the building trades on site, we have tremendous contractors, we have the will of the Secretary of Transportation, and so my heartfelt thank you to all of you that supported me through these critical last four days. And, Mr. President, I just want to comment on another matter. This body took another step toward cracking down on quality of life issues, including fighting boom parties and reckless drifting. We passed two critical resolutions, one establishing a task force to look at existing code and departmental practices related to the construction industry and getting business done. The task force will produce a report for the next mayor and city council with actionable steps to revise the related code and how it is administered. The second resolution authorizes a hearing to examine the impacts of funding opportunities to bring rapid transit to the northeast. We must pursue all options to uplift over 500,000 of some of our city's most diverse communities that reside along that corridor. The excitement around this announcement has been overwhelming, and the opportunities this project presents are huge. Lastly, Mr. President, this body has decided to honor one of our city's great leaders, former Congressman Bob Borsky. We not only honored his immense legacy, but we have continued his fight to help everyday Philadelphians. So thank you to all my colleagues and to you, Mr. President, for taking true action to help our city. I believe with all my heart, our best days are yet to come, that the future for the city of Philadelphia is bright, and I would like to wish all the fathers a warm Happy Father's Day.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you for your continued efforts on something that has touched everybody, especially with the I-95 challenge. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I want to acknowledge that we will be on Sunday having our Juneteenth parade, which starts off in the 4th District, ends up in the 3rd District at 12 noon, starting at 52nd and Parkside. I think this might be our 7th Juneteenth parade. I moved from Center City to West Philly to accommodate longer floats and participation, and I'm excited about the fact that it acknowledges the struggles of emancipation for freed slaves in America. But it is truly appropriate that my colleague Jamie Gutierrez introduced the reparations piece to kind of be a companion to the celebration, but to the realization that that whole process had a negative impact and that there's some people still suffering that need help. So everybody's welcome to come out, it is a festive activity. I used to walk it, I will ride a float this year, Mr. Chairman, and look forward to seeing everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you. On the topic of the shooting yesterday in Alany, I sat in my living room and heard the gunfire. And I said to my son, who I was talking on the telephone with at the time, I hear gunfire. Of course, my phone started blowing up because not only do I live in Alany, in close to that area, I'm the ward leader in that area, and a couple of us went out to see what was going on after the effect. And it just was really sad to find out that a young child got shot in both legs as a result of the recklessness that our city continues to endure from the youth that seem to be losing their minds. I also want to mention, this Saturday, I hope all of my colleagues will join us, myself and Councilman Curtis Jones, for a special street renaming ceremony to honor the late Barbara Daniel Cox. The street naming will be held at North 41st Street between Parkside and South Concourse Drive. It will be now called the Barbara Daniel Cox Way. Barbara Daniel Cox is the founder of the Black Family Reunion, and she used to celebrate Black history here in Philadelphia every year in the park with stilt walkers and dancers and drummers and the beautiful costumes. And she was a force to be reckoned with when it came time to discuss Black history. She made sure if you were ever in her presence or in her company that she shared something with you about the heritage of Africans. And most important, she not only talked it, the talk, she walked it, and she dressed that way continuously in her life. So please come out and be a part of this big celebration with us this Saturday between 10 and 11 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seeing there's no other speeches on behalf of the council members, Chair recognizes Councilmember Bass for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make a motion to adjourn, I just wanted to acknowledge that our colleague, former colleague Derek Green is here, or was here. Oh, he was here. He had to leave.
Hey, he's here.
He was just here. Oh, there he is. Okay. Hey, Derek. I just wanted to acknowledge his presence. And also I wanted to also join the chorus to thank Councilman Driscoll for his leadership for what happened on 95. I woke up Sunday morning and saw it on the news, and I just couldn't believe it. I mean, it was just really shocking to see. But I saw you there, and I had a lot of confidence that I knew things were going to be done and they were going to be done right. And I want to thank all the players who showed up. I was really heartened to hear Governor Shapiro's words yesterday and, you know, everybody stepping up to the plate and whatever we, as an entire city, can do to help get 95 back on track and just to stop the disruption, you know, we're all here for you for that. And also condolences to the driver of the truck who, you know, we lost on that day, to him, to his family. to his family. And that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, at 10 a.m.
It's been moved in property second, the council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 22nd, 2023, at 10 a.m. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Aye. If there's opposed, ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much. Have a great week. Happy Father's Day.